So let's start, welcome to the Wyndham Select Board meeting for three October, it's six thirty-two. This is a recorded virtual meeting, all votes be by roll call. And present are Gary Cheeseman from the Select Board.
Diane Buka.
Peter Clay.
And let's go right into the slide deck if you're ready. Michelle.
There was seven, some techno- technology difficulties, so Michelle, if you want to make me the co-host, let me see if I can share from my end.
Hi, I did, I made you co-host.
Okay, let's try this. All right, how does that look, full screen?
Yes, looks good. You got it Diane and Peter?
Yes.
Looks good.
All right, so as usual, let's start off with the public input if there is for items from the public comment that are not on the agenda tonight. And I believe we'll have time after all the presentations for further public input on those. So any hands up? Michelle?
Patrick, what else? Hands up?
Right. Patrick, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask the Select Board to listen to your constituents. The Select Board made our special town meeting much more difficult than it had to be. There were no need for two-thirds majorities on any of our votes. There's no need for a ballot vote on Article Two, except that it's already printed and now we're going to the ballot. There was no need to dictate funding mechanism for the feasibility study. People have been telling you this, but you haven't been listening, so I ask you to please listen to your constituents. And I'll leave you with a couple of potential to-dos for you. Turn on the Zoom chat, turn it back on, let us tell you what we're thinking. Focus on what the speaker is saying, not the stopwatch, not stopping a person at two minutes, but listen to what is being said at these meetings. Put the school feasibility study on the list of potential ARPA projects. Don't force us to go to a writing, sir, writing campaign on a survey. The people want it there, listen to your constituents, please. And take a moment for self-reflection. Ask yourselves, why am I on the Select Board? Are my decisions for the greater good or the personal interest? And I'm not saying personal gain, but personal projects. The town is speaking, please listen, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, anybody else? All right, onward then, please, Michelle. Or Steve, you bring the slides? All right, so Steve, your announcements?
All right. You know, I just want to announce, I know we've been taking the opportunity every chance we can, but final announcement, I believe, probably at least from the Select Board before Thursday, October sixth, is the Wyndham Master Plan Community Forum Open House at the Wyndham Museum, right next to the Town Hall. For any additional, we invite everyone to come down again Thursday, October sixth, six to eight P M. Any additional questions or concerns, reach out to Margaret Hoffman, our planner, or feel free to reach out to myself or Michelle, I'll make sure your questions get answered.
Uh, Steve, Peter Cloud, just love to add that we need as many people as possible to come to this Wyndham Master Plan Community Forum Open House. I'm beginning to think that we may have a rep and we may have a state senator there, which is always good. So just spread the word as far as you can, please.
And we could add also, this is for all ages, and the Wyndham Museum has very kindly opened up their one hundredth anniversary display for those people that come to the forum as well.
Um, I wonder, Steve, if I could just mention something? Okay, great, um, the, it does say it's from six to eight P M., but it's an open house and you don't have to be there at six o'clock. You can stay as long as you'd like. There'll be two presentations, one happens at six thirty and one happens at seven thirty. It's the same presentation, it's just for whoever's there at six thirty and then whoever stays for the seven thirty. But again, you don't have to be there for the whole two hours, anytime that you can come in between six and eight would be wonderfully appreciated.
All right, Town Administrator's update, just, just a couple for this evening. When the budget memo went out today to all the boards, committees and department heads. So we're going to start essentially that process, all the templates have been made and distributed, you know, we're going to start the the meeting process, internal meeting process in two weeks, so the first meeting will take place on Monday, October seventeenth. The slight change to this year's processes, we have included boards and committees, so we're going to be reaching out, or I'll be reaching out to chairs tomorrow with kind of, you know, a template that they can use to help them think ahead for budgetary or expenditure needs coming up in the fiscal year, so kind of, you know, instead of being reactionary and looking for the money when, you know, the money's needed in the fiscal year through other, through other expense line items and try to, you know, try to, try to get some things down on paper and plan ahead, so we know we have the money squared away for that. Yeah, we had, last week, we had a meeting, essentially the first budget kickoff meeting with schools and the chairs of the Select Board of both Hamilton and Wyndham and the chairs of the FinCom, both Hamilton and Wyndham, Joe, the Town Manager, myself and Jamie Cologne and and their, their Finance Director and along with members from the School Committee and Eric Tracy and their Finance Director on the school side. And it was a good, good meeting, everybody, you know, I think it's a good relationship, everybody's been open and transparent, so we're looking forward to that process, and that is all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, for a chair's report is maybe a fun one here. I think quite a few people are out on the twenty-fourth of September, that Saturday, for the Children's Business Fair. So thanks to Bethany Davis Swanson and Natalie Bowers who organized that, but a big success. Participation doubled from twenty-four booths last year to sixty kids at forty-eight booths this year. And I'll just run through the winners if I could here, so under twelve age group for most business potential was Hannah LeBlanc, who did multiple handmade items, including dog toys. Most creative idea was Finn Laporte, who did handmade clay magnets and jewelry. And the spirit of entrepreneurship was Ameris McCready, who did wild and woolly and needle felted wool pumpkins, those are pretty neat. And the twelve and over group, business potential, Callie Mignon, who did custom wooden science and trays. Most creative idea, Rumi Corom, who did Unicorn Sparkle Eco Glitter and Spirit of Entrepreneurship, Luke Wallace, who did drone photography, so quite a wide range of talents there, and I think Diane, you did a little bit of shopping there too, any comments?
I did.
Very well, then, the Select Board members, Diane, any reports? Do we lose you there, Diane?
I don't know, did I freeze?
So any, any reports from you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I must have froze, I didn't hear that part. I just wanted to thank the almost hundred and sixty people that showed up for the special town meeting. I thought it went very well, different than in the past with an appointed special town meeting clerk, that was good, and again, the children's fair was awesome, and we have a lot of upcoming things with the master plan. On Thursday, we all want to get there.
I did.
Someone needs to mute, please.
In person and then I realized it was virtual, so here I am. Trick or treat hours. Nope, they're just.
Yeah, I would like to say something, so last week, Eric Mansfield and I went to the North, I'm going to get the name wrong, but the North Shore Water Resilience Alliance and
With Peter Clay.
Who's, Ernest, I think you're, you need to mute yourself. Okay. Oh, there you go, and so Eric, I think is going to be on the agenda on, is it late October, Steve?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the calendar right now, it's the eighteenth, October eighteenth.
Yeah, and I, it's, this is basically every town signed on to try and make things better in terms of qual- quantity and quality of water. And and Bruce's staff has done great things so far, and I mean, we're sitting there in the room with the Beverly Salem Water Supply Board. And then people from Beverly, people from Salem, it was, it was really good. I look forward to Eric walking you through it.
Sounds good. Yeah, certainly, going forward is going to be one of our most critical issues, finding the water. All right. Onto consent agenda? Think this is yours, Peter? Yeah, muted.
I move to approve the Wyndham Select Board Open Session Meeting Minutes of June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, September seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Any other comments, otherwise roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes?
If I, if I may, did we get all the announcements or did I miss them? Was there an announcement about trick or treat and stuff like that?
Coming up.
It's coming up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we've got to take a vote on it, so it's business.
Okay, sorry. Oh, I see.
All right, consent agenda's done. Moving on, so here you go, Diane. Halloween trick or treat hours, we make the motion to have trick or treat in Wyndham from five to eight P M. on Halloween, that's a Monday night. Residents who do not wish to receive trick or treaters on Halloween are encouraged to, encouraged to turn off outdoor lighting. So Diane, you want to form a motion for those hours?
Sure, I didn't realize this, I move that we set the hours for trick or treating in the town of Wyndham on, I think it's a Monday, October thirty-first, from five to eight P M.
Peter Clay's seconds.
Any questions or comments? Otherwise, roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Gary, yes? All right. So tonight, we have a presentation by the Hamilton Wyndham Athletic Fields Improvement Committee. As you know, in the Saturday town meetings, the both towns approved a stabilization fund that will allow the school district to go ahead with these projects as they accumulate money and go through the different phases. Otherwise, is it Michelle Horgan on presenting, Steve, or someone else from the committee?
I do not see anybody on right now. Unless anyone in the, in the audience can speak up, I don't, I don't see anybody from the school committee.
All right. Well, um, Steve, do you want to? Yeah, let's, with the other two board members, so we just step on to see and
Yeah, step on to see then, you know, we can either just move it to the next meeting, or maybe they were thinking that'd be later in the agenda.
All right.
As far as timing, but I think we should just move on to see at this point.
All right, very well, that okay with you, Diane, Peter?
Certainly.
All right, so tonight, as Steve will show, a long process to reach some decisions on the state and local fiscal recovery funds, which are part of ARPA. So tonight, we've asked many of the applicants to come on, we've got slides that they'll talk to and get further details on each of those programs. So I'll turn it over to Steve, if you want to go through the preliminary slides there and set the stage, and then we'll invite others to come in and discuss the, their project. After each presentation, I propose that the Select Board will ask questions and comments, but would hold the public comments to the end after everyone's finished. Is that okay with you, Diane and Peter?
Yes.
Yep, all right. So over to you, Steve.
All right, would you like me to stop between each slide, because I have a number of?
Yeah, so I think between each slide, just stop for a second and see if any of the three of us have particular.
Sounds good. All right, so this is just, you know, backtrack, and I know that it's been information overload, but yeah, I figured it's worth just sharing again, what is ARPA? You know, these funds, it's the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. It was signed into law March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, and it basically provides a total of three hundred and fifty billion dollars in a state, an additional funding for state and local governments to help them build out infrastructure and deal with the direct impacts as related to the COVID pandemic. And be, because of these funds, essentially, once you trickle down to all the states and local counties and cities and towns and the, the entire country, Wyndham's share of that is about one point four million dollars. There's several allowable uses for these, it can be used for revenue replacement, so this would be lost revenue due to impacts to the community's revenue sources such as excise tax, local receipts, local receipts shut, and local receipts such as building permit fees, licensing fees, local election taxes such as meals and hotels, hotel taxes. It is expenditures for economic impacts for COVID nineteen to give assistance to small businesses, households or hard hit in industries within the community, premium pay for essential workers and investment into water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. These funds are not to be used for, to offset the tax rate, so essentially to use these one-time funds to reduce your tax bill in one year. Or to, and the funds cannot be deposited into any pension fund directly to a stabilization fund or for the payment of debt service. And this is the timeline that we've, you know, essentially from, like I mentioned before, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, it was signed into law. And here are the steps that the town of Wyndham has taken over the last couple of years, year and a half to get to this point, down, down at the bottom right, you see October third, two thousand twenty-two, this is the public information session that we're discussing the top twenty-five ARPA funding projects. So, you know, I won't go through every step, but I, you know, I'll just want to, you know, highlight that, you know, Mr., we've had a couple of different administrators here in the seats, you'll see the names changed throughout the slides. But Mr. Ferrera, Town Administrator at Time, on October twenty-sixth, emailed the Finance Committee and the Select Board Chairs with an ARPA request from Senator's Tower, Tara's Office requesting the priorities of both those boards and what they see their priorities are as far as ARPA spending. Then Mr. Younger sends it, sends it in all departments email on April twenty-first to compile a list, this went out to all departments requesting prioritize list of potential ARPA projects due based on the immediate needs of the town, and once that list was compiled on May fourth, it was sent to the auditor for review for compliance. And on May fifth, we heard back and Mr. Younger notified the Select Board and Finance Committee of the fact that the auditor has reviewed that list and, and his opinion, all are eligible for the funding. There was also a question as to the the date, and I didn't update it, so that's my error, but about three Select Board, four Select Board meetings ago, the Select Board ranked all sixty-three projects in order of importance to them based on their intimate knowledge of the town and giving them a score, so we were able to numerically rank all the projects and come up with the, essentially the top thirty, which would be, which would spend the available funds, which is roughly the one point two million dollars and two times, two and a half times, so we're looking at about, you know, two point five to three million dollars worth of expenditure requested with the one point two million dollars, that's how we arrived at the top twenty-five. And they've since had a couple, since that have had a couple of public information discussions, just general discussions on the, on the use of ARPA funds, one of them on September seventh was a joint meeting with the FinCom. And that leads us to the presentation tonight. So what's next, after we go through, we're going to go through all the slides, those are, these are all, these are the top twenty-five projects and in no order of ranking, they are just grouped by the, the requesting department, so that if an individual has more than one slide, they'll be grouped together. And once, once, once this is through, we are going to create a public survey so that the residents can view this presentation and make, you know, an educational decision based on, you know, their own knowledge of the town and their own determination for needs and be able to rank them so that the Select Board can take the input and determine the final ranking for expenditures of ARPA funds. The first one, I'm going to, the first request, and I think, you know, it's one of the, one of the most important ones is
Steve? Just a question for you. What's the cost of all of these in total?
I'm going to say roughly, I know the cost is still fluctuating as we hammer out the details, but roughly about two point five to two point seven million dollars will be the cost of all these projects that.
So that's how much over what we have?
A little over twice.
So when, so when we do the survey, monkey, are we going to set that up? That we're going to put a price on every one of these things you're looking at, and just understand that we're, they add up to double. So we can only do about half, half the money represented by all these projects.
Yeah. Right, so, you know, at a high level, I what, what essentially what we're looking to do is to do, well, to do just that, to educate folks on what the projects mean, how much they cost, and then allow everybody to go through the same exercise that the Select Board went through in ranking them. And what this will ultimately provide us is a quantitative approach to ranking our projects and coming up with a list, even though we've spent, you know, say we, say we arrive at a list, the top twenty-five projects. You know, obviously not going to get through all twenty-five projects because you spent the money two times over, but what it gives you is a list to work off of, so maybe we can get to the first fifteen definitely. But then we're able to find alternative sources of funding such as CPC funds for the HVAC in the Town Hall. And that gives us, you know, we've found, let's say, found three hundred thousand dollars worth of funding that no longer has to come from ARPA that allows us to just move further down the list, so we can then take the next project that was kind of on deck that may or may not get funded, we can then, you know, now that project can get funded, or maybe the next three or four projects, because it's a large amount of money, but it gives us a prioritized list to work up of.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Select Board?
Good to hear.
All right. All right, so the first request is, in my opinion, one of the, you know, well, they're all important, but what this one is, is essentially it's revenue replacement, so this is, this, these are revenues that the town would have otherwise received if the pandemic never happened. So the two, the two pieces here are the iron rail, which is the revenue loss from the Pandaric pandemic due to the impact on the operations of the tenants, causing them the inability to pay their rent through a certain period of time. We estimate this impact to be at about ninety-five thousand dollars. And town lost revenue, so this is revenue loss, like I mentioned on a previous slide, to the economic impacts of excise tax generation, so with the chip shortages and, you know, the closures, people were unable to buy new cars. And when you don't have the vehicle turnover, you don't have the excise tax generation ability because new cars are underappreciated. When calculating the excise tax and the used cars are, you know, go to about ten percent appreciation within the first five years. So right there, without the turn of vehicles, you see a large impact in your excise tax generation. That's probably our largest driver of the lost revenue, but with that, with the closures, we also saw, you know, a reduction in building permit fees, any local tax, which is hotel motel meal tax, licensing and other miscellaneous permitting fees that the town does for, you know, conservation and, and things like that. So we estimate that impact to be at about three hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, just, I want to remind everyone, this is money that the town would have received, so this would be essentially money that would have, you know, been in excess of the budgeted, budgeted revenue amounts that would have generated additional free cash balance in any given year, which would have, which have, you know, in all things being equal, which would provided more budget, budgetary flexibility, larger reserves and the ability to, to handle this inflationary environment that we're in right now. And this is for the iron rail, so this is for planning for the iron rail property, there's been a lot of talk since I started at least about, you know, what to do with the iron rail property, does the town want to be in the business of being a landlord, or is there a better use for the property, like what's the most advantageous use for the property for the town? So this estimation of two thousand dollars would pay for redevelopment study and appraisal and help with the highest and best use analysis, and it's very timely with the Master Plan Advisory Committee because, you know, we can align that with, not only the highest and best use, but lie that, lie the highest and best use in line with the uses that the town determines through the, through the master plan process as being the uses that they want here in town. Information technology, so these are, we have some pretty significant information technology needs. Our server is, so our data center is about seven years old. And based on the industry professionals I've talked to, replacement cycles that recommended for three to five years on this type of hardware, so we're, you know, outside the life expectancy and essentially on borrowed time at this point with our server, you're looking at probably two hundred thousand dollars to replace the server network switching replacement, so that's, we have one at the COA, police, fire, Town Hall, that's the network coming in, both for the internet and to maintain our network connections for the network drives and email. for the network drives and email, things like that. Current switching in each of these locations is about seven to ten years old. Again, industry replacement recommends three to five year replacement on switches. You're looking at about fifty-five hundred or six thousand dollars per switch to buy the switch and have it replaced. Have four of them. And then just various security and hardware upgrades. Right now, we don't have a a defined replacement cycle for our hardware. And we do have some updated pieces of, you know, PCs, printers, scanners. So we'd be looking to to bring us up to, you know, essentially so that all our machines are compatible with, you know, the more, the more modern versions of Windows and the ability to run Outlook three sixty-five as we migrate over to there. And then establish a baseline so that we can implement a formal replacement cycle going forward. Also to to correct or to fix our fiber optic connection to the various town locations. We do have some connections, but there is I believe the the line is broken in places. And that would allow us to, if we did have a fiber connection to all satellite locations, we'd be able to eliminate redundancy based on the fact that we have, like I mentioned before, we're maintaining four switches in each location. Where it would allow us to have one master switch for similar cost. And you'd be a replacement cycle on just that one switch instead of having to pour. And network security upgrade. So things like Maya is our, our liability insurance is getting more and more strict with things like multi-factor authentication. Outlook three sixty-five does have the multi-factor authentication for email, which we plan on utilizing as we migrate over there. But things are getting stricter and stricter and likely it will be a network-wide encryption where we're going to have to use multi-factor access to gain access, you know, every day when we come to work and sign in or sign in from our laptops at home. And this one, I'll let Rich or Mike Hardy jump in as we, let me stop and ask if the Select Board has any questions on the slides that I just presented.
Peter?
I do not.
Diane?
Just a quick one. It's probably just a price update. On my last list, it was a hundred and fifty thousand for all those IT.
Yes, that was right. So that was that was an estimation that I used, not knowing the age of the data center. The age of the switches. So I had I met with Colby Cousins, who is the Director of the North Shore IT Coalition that we're a member of, which is a comprised of several communities in the area and also with Tom Rudden, our direct IT provider to go over those details. And that's what they presented to me. And I've updated the number accordingly.
Thank you.
So is Rich or Mike on?
Oh, Rich Sosa here. I I can jump in. And I think Mike is on the call too. It's a, it's a, questions I have, I fill in, but ah, yep. So this, this is regards to buildings and grounds. First one we have is the iron rail, the septic system replacement. Which has been known for a while that that system has basically outlived its, its life expectancy. There has been in-house repairs performed before my time, but, you know, we have done work there and it's really at the point where that septic system needs to be replaced, you know, that in in lieu of the couple of previous slides where there's going to be a bit of a study at the, at the iron rail you know, facility itself, but one of the first orders of business would be replacing that septic if we were to, if we were to remain ownership in that. Number two, town hall HVAC replacement. Now, this is a closed-loop water system. So what happens is there's no fresh makeup air from the outside. Couple of things there. One, obviously, the fresh air is better for occupants within the building. The closed-loop water system creates the pipes to sweat. And, you know, there's, there's observable water damage. The first picture is a heater in one of the offices. And you can see rust. I mean, it's basically throughout the system, there's just been, you know, wear and tear on it. So the recommendation is to replace the system. That would be more efficient, better filtration. You know, introducing the makeup air. Good news, or I guess encouraging news is since we submitted this slide with the five hundred thousand dollar price tag, we have received an initial estimate. That came in more about three hundred and fifty. Mike and myself need to go through that and just, I get, you know, more or less feel comfortable with that, making sure you know, that I'm missing any contingencies that we should have in there, but again, it, it's encouraging that that's where that came in. The third is town hall, the the main entry doors replacement. So these are the, the entry doors on the parking lot side. Few issues here. One is you can pretty much walk up to that door during off hours and give it a good pull and you can almost, you know, rip it ajar. It, it, the bottom doesn't latch and there's some security issues there. And additionally, with the, with that, that this third picture on this slide, it's hard to see due to the size, but you can see daylight down the bottom there. So not only is that a security issue, but a energy efficiency issue where, you know, heat loss, obviously this coming up this time of year and AC loss. So you know, it would be new FOB system, the doors would latch properly. It'd boost up security. So that's where, you know, our recommendation just to replace the, the whole, the whole pack, door package. Any questions, you know, feel free.
Diane, any questions?
I do have a question. Rich, so if we decide to do something with iron rail, do we, would we still do the septic system replacement would be?
And you're just wondering. Well, yeah. So I guess it depends on what that what the fate, I guess, is as far as continue, you know, continued occupancy where you're going to have users of the septic system. The, we would have to update that and, you know, replace that system. So it's, it's really the, you know, looking at it as what that building in the future, how, how that will be utilized by the town and the, and the demand. So I, I think Diane, to answer the questions that, you know, if we were to remain owners and operate it similarly, then we should definitely do that system.
Thank you.
I think my understanding is that the Rich corrected on that it's it, it's a relatively urgent repair. Right. So like, it's not like we have years to figure out, to let the master planning process go through, figure out what we're going to do. This is something that really, there's a, there's a number of deferred capital items over there, but this was one that was identified as something that really needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
Yes, time, yeah, time is not on our side for that particular system.
Thank you.
Peter, Gary, you guys have any questions?
Good here, Peter, anything?
Uh, no, I think that's, if it really comes in at three fifty, that's going to be a big deal.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's encouraging. It's definitely in going in the right direction.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Alright, this one is actually a combination of three requests, but we've taken those three requests down. They're all related to town hall security updates. We thought it best to speak of them very generally to, you know, to kind of not show our cards, so to speak, as to what we're planning on doing. But I can say that you know, really it's three, three primary projects and they were really pretty much industry standards as far as security. Best practices go as far as security for the safety of the public visiting the building, the individuals that work in the building, our ability to keep documents safe, cash safe. And and things like that. It's, you know, it's just some, some areas that we're not really up to par on and we could do better in. And they were identified as this could be an opportunity where we could address these needs.
Is there an amount?
Yeah, it's, I believe it's thirty-five thousand dollars total for all of them.
Thank you.
And the direct, I'm sorry, any other questions on that side?
None for me.
And the next one is, so it's an allowable use. This is one of the, the key, you know, the key reasons for these funds is to help communities across the country deal with the impact of the coronavirus. And with, with these federal funds, not just ARPA, but CARES CARES Act funds, we've talked about FEMA-related funds. All that require, you know, not only a significant amount of reporting, but also audits, right? So the, the state wants to see the audited records of all these expenditures. Federal government wants to see audited reports of these expenditures. They then will audit your results where that they will be asking you for. For example, we had one, you know, and this is just a forty-seven dollar piece of Plexiglas. They want a picture of the Plexiglas. They want to know, you know, if it's permanently affixed to the ceiling or to the floor. The age of the building and a narrative as to what the need was, what the driving need was, need to install that piece of Plexiglas. So that's the level of, you know, auditing that they're doing. And so, you know, they, they're allowing for the help, the management reporting. Audits or independent auditor charges us a fee every time we have them audit our records to submit it to the, to the federal government. And technology requirements as they're related to hybrid meetings and the cleaning and PP equipment as it relates to COVID nineteen. So these are the, essentially the four projects at the top of the presentation, which is, has to do with you know, again, auditing, reporting, technology for hybrid meetings and cleaning that were discussed at the prior Select Board meeting. We can provide more details online. And it's total cost is about a hundred thousand dollars. The Select Board voted to, you know, essentially move those through as an allowable funding source due to the nature that they're unavoidable cost and a cost that we do not have budgeted for revenue source for. Any questions on that one?
No, I think we're good.
Good.
So this is, so they want, the Water Department wants to do a water system study. So they, they know that there's, you know, a significant, they've done some improvements. They know that there is, you know, a significant amount of capital improvements that still need to be done. And essentially they want to have a study done. It's a hundred thousand dollars to come in and, you know, help inventory our infrastructure and come up with a capital plan. That's the most cost-effective and time-effective way of going about updating the water system here in town. So it'll be essentially provide a roadmap of short-term immediate needs and long-term needs. And how best to, you know, to start to, you know, start to handle them and address them. Does there, are there any questions on this slide?
You say that was a hundred thousand?
Yes.
No questions for me. And I believe this entails, you know, actual onsite inspections, right, of pipelines and hydrants and so forth?
Yeah, it's a pretty, I understand it's a very involved study. Yeah, so I think there'll be scope and pipes and identifying locations and, you know, really helping close some loose ends that we have.
Alright.
Moving on. Great, we have a, sorry, we have another Rich, Rich Sosa slide.
Yep. So this, this now is highway department focused. So these, these three projects basically identifying three needs in town that we want to continue. You know, updating and repair replacing. So first is ADA ramp and sidewalk repairs. So this would be a bit of a continuance around, you know, Bucker School and the library area where there's you know, what I consider highly traveled sidewalks that need proper ADA ramp installations and also some stretches of sidewalk that could be replaced. So it, it's really just sort of a continuation of being able to link. You know, basically from the library, you know, down to, you know, right down to the town hall, you know, basically Main Street. And again, in and around the, the school. Second one is stormwater drainage and culvert repairs. This one's for forty thousand dollars. This is, this is really just to be able to do additional repair work, camera work. You know, a, a, for instance, we just recently went out for West Wyndham Park and camered the, the drainage system from the park, you know, down to Tossville Road. Jetted anything that was, any, any blockages and basically cleared out that system, you know, that, that localized system to ensure you know, proper stormwater flow. So this would really be just as, as issues come up, there's funds to be able to go out identify and then repair these, these lines. So, you know, we do have an ongoing list. So, you know, we basically start working on that list. So that, again, that's just a, a you know, help to the budget to, to do more work. Then the third is, you know, similar in the sense for Sunday, you know, various roadway paving projects of seventy-five thousand dollars. I, I put that note in there regarding, you know, I, I think it would make, it'd be good use of these funds to, you know, take a look at the streets that don't qualify under Chapter ninety program. Two biggest, I mean, I guess the, the biggest driver for that criteria is any street under five hundred feet does not qualify with Chapter ninety. And obviously, you know, Wyndham has, you know, various streets that are, that are less than that. So you know, I have to use capital funds or, you know, if, you know, situation like this comes up, I could use this, this money towards that. So that is where I think I'd get the most bang for my buck would be to identify roads that are not going to qualify for Chapter ninety and, and use the funds to, you know, to do some resurfacing there. So that, that's really the, you know, those, those three bullets is to be able just to continue, you know, with, with the, you know, maintenance and, and repair of the, of the infrastructure. So feel, any, any questions? Feel free.
Peter?
I have no questions. I think what you've done on schools, it's amazing.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that.
I have no questions and I like that as well. Around Bucker, it looks great.
Thank you.
Echoed a third time. Alright. Next slide then. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Alright. Chief Kavanaugh will present on Hoje.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So the jaws of life, the current set of jaws of life extracation tools are twenty-plus years old and are in dire need for replacement. The company that manufactures that current set is no longer a business and finding replacement parts is next to impossible. I'm looking to replace the current set of jaws of life with an electric set. The set we now have run off a gas-powered unit. Which also has hydraulic lines, which are a complete mess during an accident scene. The electric set would allow us to move around a vehicle more freely without hydraulic lines in the way and would allow us to use multiple tools. And at once for a quicker extrication of an individual. So I'm asking you to hopefully support this jaws of life unit.
Chief, do you remember up the top you had the costs on something like this?
It's about forty seven to fifty thousand. I I know I have it earmarked for forty seven, but it can, you know, we did this almost a year and a half ago, this. And it's just coming to light now, we already had a, so I imagine the costs have gone up some on on everything, so. Any questions on that?
Not here, Diane's good.
Thank you. So the SCBA fill station. Fills the tanks that you see on firefighters backs for use during any incident that would require that firefighter to go in. Go on air and not breathe in smoke and dangerous gases. The current SCBA fill station is once again a twenty plus year old piece of equipment that desperately needs. To be replaced, the current fill station only allows one bottle to be filled at a time. Where the new fill station would allow firefighters to fill three bottles at a time. The explosion chamber which the SCBA bottle sits in during the filling procedure will soon be out of NFPA compliance either way. I'm asking the select board to once again support this very important piece of equipment.
Questions on this one, Peter?
Nope, not supported.
Diane?
No questions, thanks.
Next then?
Alright, as you can see the bullet points there, I'm also gonna. I'd like to read a letter that I wrote. It should be less than a minute, I'm hoping, I'll read fast. When COVID nineteen first struck this town, the firefighters for the town of Wyndham. Answered every single call, fire and medical. When the firefighters responded to homes and businesses in town, they did not know if the homeowners or business owners had COVID. This was the worst part of the job because frankly, it scared every single one of us. Some of the firefighters, young and older, had babies, small children, elderly parents and spouses to care for when we arrived home. This in fact was the scariest because we knew we were treating and transporting patients with known COVID. And we just never knew what in fact we would bring home. Our full time staff went to work every day and did not have the luxury of logging in on our computers from the safety of our homes. Our firefighters worked tirelessly and selflessly and responded to every call without hesitation. So to me, not only as chief of the department, but also a taxpayer, this is a very small amount. To show our support and respect for our first responders. I would also like to add, while most people think COVID has passed. It has not, and ever since day one of the pandemic, we are still transporting COVID patients on a regular basis, thank you. Any questions on that?
No, thank you, chief.
Think we're good?
Thank you.
So if we move into a different category, then uh thank you, chief, so uh three uh major items from you. All need serious consideration.
Right.
Library?
Get the next uh next two slides will be from the library and I believe uh Kim is with us tonight.
Hello. Um so our, I, um so our two requests, uh the first one is um and the uh access control system. And security camera system, um so we are asking for um a cloud based system that would control. Um the fronts, the front doors and our meeting room doors and would also include a key fob system for staff. Um our key locks are as old as the building, probably, you know, the twenty twenty one years old. Um we've had them repaired multiple times, especially over the last year, two years. Um we've had to have the casings replaced on the meeting room doors, we are in the process of getting the casings replaced on the front door. Um and we've also not had a great tracking system of who has been given master keys over the years, so um we're thinking this. Would solve a a major security gap that we have um by by installing this type of system, it would also have a. A way to automatically program the doors to lock and unlock at the beginning of the day and the end of the day. Which puts less pressure on the um the bar releases that we have, cause those have been repaired as well. Um and in the same um amount of money would be um a security camera system um that would. Be inside the building mostly and perhaps we're thinking at least one camera by the front door. Just to um we've had some some vandalism issues, especially the last couple of years since we reopened. Um and also to keep staff and patrons safe when inside the building, um we we see roughly. Last year, we saw about fifty six thousand people walk through our front doors. Um so it's definitely something that that we should have in order to to be safe. Um any questions on that?
And would that be still just about twenty thousand, you think?
Yeah, the original quote is a couple of years old, so I just, yeah, it's right in that ballpark, it might be a little bit less, but.
Okay.
And so the second one is um our HVAC system, um again, another another twenty twenty one year old. Um system and project, um we actually have three um air cooled condensers on our roof. One of them services just the large meeting room and for some reason, knock on wood, that one has operated. Pretty seamlessly, um it's the other two units that service the main building that have had some major issues. Um since two thousand ten, we've spent over twenty five thousand dollars in repairs to the cooling units. Um we had a particularly bad summer this year with them, um. If anyone was in the building, uh especially the second floor, the second floor. On some of those really hot days was getting to seventy six, seventy eight degrees, um that they just couldn't keep up. Um and we've also gone through three different green community grants to try to rectify and repair those issues, I. Did um talk to Mike Harty and to Vicky Missoni, just to recap what we had already done and what we had already put into the system to try to. Kind of rectify this and and limp by, um so they did the testing, the balancing, they adjusted the control panels, they did ductwork cleaning. And we're still at at this point.
Questions? Peter?
None for me.
Diane?
No.
Alright. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
And uh Kristen Nunes is on.
Yes, I am here.
Hey, Kristen.
Hi, how are you? Good, um so thank you very much for um. Letting me speak this evening on behalf of the Wyndham Museum. As you may recall, the ARPA funding does permit municipalities to. Um award funding in certain circumstances to nonprofits in their communities. And with that in mind, the Wyndham Museum submitted a request to the town of Wyndham. For funding under ARPA, our funding request had two components. The first was basically pandemic recovery, which is a revenue replacement request. Uh the Wyndham Museum closed to the public on Friday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty, when ordered to do so by the Commonwealth. We reopened on July seventh of twenty twenty, effectively at the earliest possible date. With the then public health um limitations that were in place, so. We were allowed to reopen, but we were not allowed to operate at full capacity. As a result of that, many of our programs were not able to happen, many of our special events could not occur, we are significantly reliant on. Special event revenue. As well as visitation driven forms of revenue, so over the sort of two first years of the pandemic from. March of twenty twenty through March of twenty twenty two, the Wyndham Museum lost a one hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. In revenue from in building forms of engagement. This fiscal year, the Wyndham Museum is also celebrating its hundredth anniversary, so we have requested. An additional amount to reflect that um in honor of the longstanding, you know, partnership and relationship that the town of Wyndham. Has had with the Wyndham Museum, we would intend to use all of these funds. To restore the programming and the staffing that we have had to eliminate. Due to these drops in visitation, our visitation has not recovered to pre-COVID levels. Prior to COVID, we were serving about thirty five thousand people a year. Um visitation has continued to rebound, but we are right now at about twelve thousand visitors a year. So this is a significant loss of income for the institution, which has resulted in, you know, substantial um adjustments. And operations and in staffing. Should these funds be awarded to the museum, we would endeavor to put them back to work in the community. By restoring programming such as, you know, school programming, public programming, programs for adults, I know many folks. Do think of the museum as a destination for children and families and we're very proud of of those relationships that we have. But we also do offer um opportunities for adults as well as steward a very large permanent collection. Of forty five thousand objects that really um chronicles the stories of Wyndham history and local history. These funds would also go to help support staff that um care for those collections. And make them publicly available either through programs or through social media or on our website. We would also use these funds to better communicate what the Wyndham Museum uh has available to the community to support. Learning not only for children and schools, but also for community members at large to help facilitate. Research requests, genealogical requests to really um best execute our mission for the benefit of all. We would also apply these funds over several fiscal years. You know, the Wyndham Museum, I think for much of its its long life here, um as a hundred year old institution, has really often run on. A shoestring budget where we are and remain dependent on volunteers and interns, I don't see that changing. Um we are able to really make the most of the funding that we do have. Um however, we are at a point where we really do need to reinvest in. The capacity of the institution to serve our community and meet the expectations of the community for the level of service. And the quality of service and programming that they would expect, so that would be our anticipated use um for the funds, I would say. You know, we've been able to operate with, you know, a a sustainable budget during COVID, but that has been through extremely aggressive. Expense management as well as two PPP loans and some generous giving in the first year of the of the pandemic to our annual fund. Um now that the PPP loan program and other forms of relief are not available to us. We are asking the town of Wyndham to help support the institution. Through the remainder of its recovery from COVID. I do encourage everyone to come to the master planning process on Thursday evening. Not only is that process, I believe, really important for the future of Wyndham, I say that as a resident as well as. The museum director, I think it's also really a great opportunity for people to come to the museum. And see our hundredth anniversary exhibition, celebrating a century, our stories and yours. Um this exhibition really truly does focus intensively on Wyndham history, I think there's a lot here that people. Maybe don't know or haven't seen before on display in our galleries, it is geared to a multi generational audience for both children. And adults, um the institution is opening up, you know, our halls for free to the community on that evening. So they can have a chance to see some of this history firsthand for themselves. Um I think we have so much to offer, there's so much more this institution would like to do for the community. We have no shortage of ideas, we frankly just need um the support. From a financial standpoint at this point to make all of those um hopes and plans a reality.
Comments, Peter?
Well, I went, I went to the hundredth anniversary, um that Friday?
Our opening on Thursday, yes.
Yeah, Thursday, sorry, that was, that was really good. Speakers were fantastic.
Good, good, good.
Diane?
I don't have any questions, thanks so much for coming.
My pleasure.
Kristen? And thanks for the pitch, the uh open forum for the master plan too.
Yes, I will be here, so I hope everyone comes, bring your families, it will, it will be fun, so.
Alright.
Alright, Kate Mallory will present on uh West Wyndham Park.
Hi, everyone. I'd I'd like to first thank the select board members, our town administrator and the community for having me here today. And considering this very exciting project. The Open Space Committee is asking for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to partially fund the West Wyndham Park project. The current West Wyndham Park has a playfield, basketball and tennis courts in need of repair. No ADA accessibility and limited parking. The Open Space Committee was awarded funding from CPC for a feasibility study of the park. This included a survey which concluded the community wants a place, not only with play structures for young children. But where families can gather, a destination park where middle schoolers would enjoy park play. Over the current draw of Cumberland Farms, or so I've heard. Taking everything into consideration, we came up with the plan pictured on the right of your screen. The total of this plan would cost seven hundred thousand dollars, the infrastructure piece would be around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Which includes ADA accessibility, drainage, green infrastructure, parking and signage. The Open Space Committee has been trying to creatively diversify funding sources to maximize the chance for success. We have not only applied just for ARPA funding, but we've applied for state grants. Our next step will be applying for CPC funding, we are starting community fundraising. And we have already applied for and received twenty thousand dollars from the state of Massachusetts. So why ARPA funding? The park will not only expand the existing facilities, but the infrastructure work will ensure universal access. And make the park ADA compliant. The goal is to rejuvenate a valuable resource so it meets the demands of multiple generations in a recreationally underserved area. I thank you guys so much for your time and look forward to your feedback.
Thanks, Kate.
Peter? Maybe not, Diane?
No, that was great, thank you, Kate.
Yes, so the uh you're looking at the hundred and seventy as the uh initial infrastructure part?
Yes, we figured with um. The fundraising activities, the grants we applied for, that the infrastructure piece is the hardest part for us to raise. And we figured that it would fit into the ARPA funding um nicely and it would really help get the project uh moving and off the ground.
Alright. Very well. One more chance for Peter? Nope, alright. Thank you, Kate.
Gary, uh Ernest Ashley raises.
Yeah, let's um.
Thank you very much, Ernest. Yes.
Alright.
Uh thank you very much, Ernest Ashley of Nine Foster Street, and I speak as chair of the Open Space and Recreation Committee to. Encourage uh the support for the application of ARPA funds for that infrastructure. Which would be necessary really to initiate redevelopment of the West Wyndham Park. As as Kate mentioned, we had a feasibility study done and we find economical uh proposed improvements. And the ARPA funds would really be seed money to be able to have ADA compliance and more access. For this underutilized uh area in a recreationally underserved part of the town. So thanks very much for the opportunity and the consideration for this uh request.
Thank you, Ernest.
Alright, so this one um. I can jump in, I'll I'll present this one.
You got this, Steve, yes.
Yep, so this is a request for added planning support, so right now we're in kind of a unique um. Situation for the town of Wyndham, so we have a a master planning process. So we have a, a master planning process going on right now. Um, the new uh, so we have MBTA communities, so communities that have an MBTA station uh within their bounds uh are going to need to address uh the new zoning requirements, so significant increase in density for um the zoning that immediately surrounding the MBTA station, so we also have uh the development of um the so-called Pulte Homes development at the Gordon College property. Uh, Route 1A uh is going through their redevelopment. We're looking at uh you know, uh possibilities of the redevelopment of iron rail or uh, you know, different uses. And then just the general action items that are determined by the master, but by, by the finalized master plan uh and the management of those. So there's really a lot going on in the planning department. We currently have uh just Margaret and she is only, only budgeted for 23 hours a week. We are asking the um, you know, select board and the residents to uh approve an additional $45,000 to be spent over the next two or three years to either increase Margaret's um hours if, you know, if she has the desire or to uh give her some support in the office uh to kind of help, help her address all these things because uh it's a very, it's a very stressed office um right now from the only one person. Margaret, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Um, I'm sorry, I should have told you I was here to present this if you needed me to. Um, yeah, I appreciate this opportunity just to let you know that all of these new projects have started uh to come at us. We're trying to uh facilitate as much as we can, but again, my hours were budgeted just for 23. Kate is also in our office. Um, she is a part-time worker also at 19 hours. So Kate has a lot on her plate as well and on top of all of these newer um potential large projects. Um, also wanted to mention that Maple Woods is going to be starting this uh probably within the next month. They're going to be doing some groundbreaking. Um, so that's going to be another large project that our office will be involved with overseeing. But again, it's mostly if I, if I were to um add my own, add hours uh to my workload and then um possibly add some for Kate and then uh if we find the need to add an additional person just for some, a few hours here and there to help fill in. But again, I appreciate you letting us present this stuff tonight and hope you'll consider our request.
Thank you, Margaret.
Diane, any questions?
No questions from me. Thank you. Thanks for coming, both of you.
Peter?
I think it's a pretty amazing time in Wenham.
Yes.
You know, there's a lot of opportunity out there and then there's potential disasters like the MBTA thing. But um yeah, Margaret, you're, you're going to be having a lot of fun over the next couple of years.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Peter. Um, I wanted to say too that there, this, this seems like an unprecedented time for Wenham. We're so pleased that the master plan is progressing and that the community is going to have an opportunity to give their input on Thursday night. In case anyone hasn't heard that yet, there is a community forum being held Thursday night at the museum. Um, but when you look at the new MBTA communities regulations, that has the potential for a fairly significant amount of development for, for Wenham uh in terms of multifamily housing. This possible Gordon College development, we don't know what that's going to end up being, but it seems like Gordon College really is poised to do something. Um, so you know, we're looking at possible new economic development after, you know, with the master plan study that happens. So I really think this is going to be a very exciting time for Wenham and the residents have a lot of um thinking to do about how they want to see this, this community progress as, as time goes on. And um again, I think the master plan is a great opportunity for everyone to give us their input. Um, again, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Hey, Margaret, I, I get invited to all these MBTA webinar, webinars.
Oh, yeah.
Um, are those things worth listening to?
Um, Peter, I'll tell you, they, they really are, but they're, they're coming at us fast and furious, which is good. The Mass Housing Partnership, DHCD, um, MAPC, all of these organizations are having their own webinars with information sessions about the MBTA communities regulations. Um, just um as a little side note, we are in communication with our town council as well as talking to DHCD and MHP just so that we're starting to get poised for this. We know we have certain things that we have to do, but um we, we're, we're staying on top of it, the timeline to make, to make sure things happen. Ultimately, it will result in a new overlay district and revisions to our bylaw that will um somehow allow for some multifamily um housing to be built in town. But it's not, it's not coming right away. There's still another year before I think we, we need to actually have something in place, so. But, but we're trying to stay on top of it. We just need the hours.
So that that means I should not listen to any of these webinars until about maybe nine months from now.
Yeah, I'll let you know. It wouldn't hurt to listen to them, but it, there is a lot of information going around and I don't think anyone's completely clear on how it's going to impact each community yet. But, but those answers will be forthcoming.
Anything else, Diane?
No, thanks.
All right. Good on this one then, Steve, I think.
I just want to just add quick, you know, like Margaret said, unprecedented times, you know, and in the development. So, you know, we have some real real, you know, some real economic development opportunities here. And just to reinforce that, you know, with economic development can come increased tax revenues and also the ability to spread the uh existing tax burden over a larger commercial, over a larger tax base. Um, so and with that, you know, we want to be able to do it right, right? So we want to have the resources to be able to vet these projects and do what's best for the community. All right. Uh, police, police departments up, I believe. Chief Denali, is this you?
This is me. Good evening, everybody. I think I'm the last one, so that makes me special. Um, so this, this first thing regarding the administration area relocation, when our uh station was built, it, they, the layout uh was kind of unorthodox for the traditional uh basic industry standard that usually is in place for our law enforcement agency, specifically a municipal police department. What happened is the uh normally you have an isolated, separate office for supervisors depending on the structure and layout uh and the breakdown of your agency. It could be lieutenants, could be sergeants, what have you. In our case, we have three uh patrol sergeants, however, they don't have their own workspace or work area. Uh, also normally in most cases, a detective bureau or a division or in our case, an isolated individual detective also has their own workspace uh for uh obviously private conversations, for interviews, for um sensitive materials, sensitive matters, all things of that nature. Um, a-again, a common uh industry standard. And then along those same lines, in, in any agency, if, if we were to think of being in other police departments, or if you've ever been in any uh police department, you'll notice the administrative area is usually, if not 95% of police departments I've ever been in, is separate um in a separate area as well with an executive administrative assistant for uh the reasons as listed above, relative to sensitive materials, uh budget conversations, internal conversations, medical psychological documents for the employees. Uh, for all that reason, this is simply um a relocation of the existing uh template and layout uh that's currently in place now in the, in the department. Um, it just to, to be congruent and to go with how things are usually structured uh and set up in, in current modern-day uh police agencies. Is any question?
All makes sense to me, Kevin.
Thank you, Peter. Um, and then following up uh relative to echo what Chief Kavanaugh said, I thought he was very eloquent and he, you know, I don't want to belabor the point too much because he made some, some phenomenal points. Uh, but this is a small ask for what the men and women of, you know, specifically our police department dealt with, along with all those men and women in police and fire and first responders throughout the country uh dealt with coming into work during the pandemic. We all remember when we were wiping down our groceries. We all remember when we had no idea what it entailed and, and my wife, God bless her, as a nurse, dealt with the same thing and uh there was so much unknown and on a regular day without a pandemic, you go to work as a police officer or firefighter not knowing if you're going to go home. And uh, and when this all started and now even till this day, we, the men and women of our agency did not miss a day of work, never complained one day, never asked for any special treatment, never asked for any special schedules. They literally asked for nothing and came to work and made my life and Deputy Chief Luke Antonio's life as administrators trying to run an agency during this tough time made it so much easier because of uh their wherewithal and their integrity and their work ethic and everything they did. I was beyond proud to, to be a leader of this agency and this is simply a, a, a small ask from, from these men and women uh to be uh to be, you know, noted for what they did and what they went through and you know, I'd be more than happy to answer questions about that as well.
None for me.
Is there a third please slide?
Uh, no, there's not, sorry.
So if we go back uh the uh the previous one on the reconfiguration, does that include any actual uh structural changes within the building?
Yeah, so my, minors, the structural, specific structure would be uh some sheet rock um and a few doors as far as structural. Um, obviously there'd be some relocation um of some um outlets and there'd be some more moving around than anything. The existing offices that are currently in place, the proposal would be my current office would be for the three sergeants to have an isolated sergeant's office and then the deputy's current office would then act as um a detective office as well. So those structurally wouldn't be changed at all. It would be more the existing uh patrol room down the end of the hallway that would become uh the traditional admin area that most agencies have. A lot of agencies, you'll see it either as a separate wing or in a larger agency, it's usually a separate floor. Uh, but in, if anything, at one level agencies, it's almost all the time a separate wing or a separate area uh in the existing layout.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, anything?
No, totally supportive.
Diane?
So I'm just wondering with that, why it was built this way? Any idea, was it different at that time?
C- candidly, I, I think just from hearing from passing down from the past two chiefs is, is there were a lot of cuts at the time. There were other proposals for different things that they were trying for and it just became a dollars and cents thing. It's a little frustrating because I, I think the layout change wouldn't have changed, I don't think financially a, a whole bunch uh with the, with the layout modification. But there were other things I know just from hearing from Chief Walsh and then eventually Chief Perkins who passed it on to me of stuff that they attempted to get. I know at the time, the, the existing um conditions that were in place, they were just so happy to be getting something to get them in a better environment that they, you know, took what they could, took what they could get, if you will.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if the people remember, the uh prior police department actually was totally housed in just where the fire department admin is now. All right.
All right. Okay, Diane.
I'm sorry, I just have one question. So the hazard pay with the COVID pay for both public safety departments, about how much? Are we talking? There's just, there's no money.
Yeah, so that's, that would be up to the select board to set that.
Oh.
Figure.
Okay.
And uh various ways, bonus, premium pay, one-time recognition, whatever. So that would take further uh talk.
Thank you.
And, and I would invite every select board member to visit me in my office.
Thank you, chief.
You are welcome.
Yep.
Is there bacon?
There could be.
All right, so um Steve, you wonder, any wrap-up comments?
No, no, really, the only comment is that, you know, that concludes the, you know, the presentation. Uh, we'll be putting all of this up on um the website as well as like more of like a, a, just a list of the projects with associated costs. I keep in mind that these costs are estimated and as Rich brought up, you know, we've moved in the right direction on the, the, from 500 to 350 on the town age back. But again, that's, you know, like he said, we haven't vetted that yet. We need, we only have one quote and we will need to make sure that they, you know, come out and and uh, you know, bid the job properly and it's getting done with what it is. So things are, things are still in fluctuation, but this is really hopefully going to give us a uh, you know, essentially a master list, prioritized master list to work off of as we uh, we start to, to get these projects underway.
Wrap-up questions or comments, Peter?
Nope. I'm good.
Diane?
No, none for me.
All right. So I'll just add that um if you haven't read it, people in the public ought to go to the uh USTreasury.gov website and read the uh overview of the final rules for the ARPA funds and understand the uh US Congress intent on this focused on uh economic recovery and infrastructure. And uh we'll get the survey out. The survey is a survey, not a, not a vote. And uh we'll uh have probably at least one, two more sessions that we need amongst the select board to uh finalize uh how much money in each category and uh what particular items go through. But as you saw tonight, there are a great many town needs that we need to address. All right. Steve, do we have?
Excuse me.
Diane?
I'm, I know the other, the, the presentation is ready too. Um, well, we have this up perhaps right on the website along with the link maybe to the survey so that, that people can see the projects again. I don't know if there's not, you know.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, what we'll do, we'll create, you know, the, on the left-hand side of the website, there's a list of categories or tabs. We'll probably put an ARPA tab right at the top and, and that will be the, you know, any material, including the link to the survey uh that's related to tonight's presentation or otherwise. I can also link to the um the federal government webpage with the final rule that uh that Gary was mentioning, as well as a bunch of resources that the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association has actually compiled an entire page on their website just around information uh on this, on these federal funds, both CARES uh and ARPA. So we can link all that. Well, all that will be in, in that.
That's, that's great because I think the presentation was wonderful. I think everyone did a wonderful job. Um, we could just use a little bit more money. That would be helpful.
Very well. Thank you for that. So uh Steve, uh do we see um anyone from the uh athletic committee?
Uh, I think, do you want to open it up for?
Oh, yes, yes. Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. So let's uh take a few comments here first then. So um let's uh open to the public to uh focus on these uh particular items. Right?
Michelle Bailey.
All right, Michelle?
Hi, good evening. As you know, the um school district has.
Identify yourself first.
Michelle Bailey.
Yeah, and address.
Oh, to Remington Road.
Right.
Um, as you are aware, the school district has identified a project to revamp the elementary schools. And um they've also identified some needs at Bukeur that need to be addressed. And where the ARPA funds are intended for the purpose of recovery and building or rebuilding infrastructure, I would encourage you to set aside funding to cover at least the feasibility study that um was approved at the town meeting on this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Wardell? All right.
Thank you. Uh, one quick question and uh comment. Uh, when is the spending deadline? When, uh, when are we supposed to have this money fully expended? When, when are we supposed to have this money fully expended?
I believe it's December of 25.
So we have plenty of time. So there's no, there's no rush to get this done. My, my comments are, I, I see 300,000 in revenue replacement for the town, 95,000 for revenue replacement for iron rail, 176,000 for revenue loss. That seems to be going into the bank account. So I'm assuming for the town, that would just go to the general fund free cash. So, which is not, from what I've read, the real intent of ARPA. It's to kickstart projects that have been stalled. And I, I would echo Michelle, Michelle's comments on the schools. We have a project in front of us that's gonna hit the tax rate. That have to, because we have this fund and the first item that's mentioned in that ARPA document is building schools. So we're teed up and ready. We know we have an expense looming right now. So I would, I would put this in the survey. Don't make it a writing. Don't make it difficult for people. Please survey. Thank you.
Any other hands up there, Steve?
Michelle Bailey, does her hand up?
All right, back to Michelle one more time.
Yeah, could I just ask a question about that? I had heard, I believe at a FinCon meeting, that iron rail rents were up to date and that we hadn't had losses. Have you verified that there actually have been losses? And also I had heard that there had been, prior to the pandemic, there had been an anticipated loss in revenue to the town from people being unable to pay their taxes. But I had also heard that that had not come to fruition. So I would be interested in knowing more about what those losses were and if they're actually real.
Well, yeah, the iron rail losses stated in this presentation is the most recent number. And those are actual losses. But I don't know if you were at the FinCon meeting, but what was discussed there were the FY 22 and FY 23 up to current and that they are, you know, those, you know, 12, 13, 15 months, they are up to date on those rents. It's the fiscal years preceding them that the loss was incurred. And you also notice that some of the tenants have been, where they can, making larger payments. If their rent is 2,000, they might make a $4,000 payment and that is reflected in that total. So if we got a larger payment, our revenue loss was reduced by that amount.
So in fact, those revenues are for way back. And so they do essentially flow into free cash if we were to use the ARPA funds for that. Because they're not going into, you know, prior year bills.
I know, but it would, I mean, essentially, yes, but it would be, right? So it's money that would have been there otherwise. So it's, you're impacting the budget flexibility and the, you know, the ability to handle the inflation as we move forward. So it's essentially, you know, your theory of a free cash balance that's spent down significantly. And it allows you to replenish that.
All right, anybody else with a hand?
I could say something?
Go ahead, Diane.
Has been checked by the.
You're freezing up, Diane.
To say that they're all appropriate for these, these funds, correct?
I think you have to repeat that, Diane, you're broken up.
Yeah, I don't know what's wrong with it. I think maybe we need a cell tower. The, all of the, all of these costs that we have on here have been approved as ARPA could be used for our, by ARPA funds, correct?
Yes, the preliminary list, which included these projects that were sent by Mr. Younger to Peter, our, our independent auditor. You know, his opinion is that, yes, they are all allowable, but we have also retained them to help us with the process as we move forward, to make sure reporting correctly and that no expenses are taken that are not allowed. So it's, you know, the process, that first reaction going to the list are allowed. But if we get into anything that's not allowed, we obviously won't, you know, won't do it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Peter?
Nope.
Diane?
No.
All right, then let's close out this item for the evening. And then do we have a speaker for the other briefing?
Yes, we do. I see Michelle was in.
All right, Michelle, Oregon.
Great, good evening. Thank you so much for hosting us. And I apologize for our late entry. I want to give kudos to the select board for running a very efficient meeting. We were in a meeting ourselves and I thought we had at least until 7:05. But thankfully, someone sent us a text. So thank you for allowing us to present. As you well know, from Superintendent Tracy's presentation on Saturday, we have formed a Hamilton One Regional School District Athletic Facility Improvement Project Committee. And so I'm here to, tonight to present this to you. As you know, from what Superintendent Tracy said, we have five or four project goals.
We've lost your audio, Michelle.
All right.
Now you're back.
I don't know why. I'm back now, okay, I go around here. So as you, I'm just gonna, I don't know if, Steve, if you can share our presentation on the screen?
It should be shared right now.
It's up.
It is up. Okay, great. So as I was saying, we have project goals due to the state of our athletic fields right now. Four of our, five of our goals, or one is to bring students and events back to campus. As you know, that we do not have tennis courts currently on the campus and as well as steel hockey is off campus. And our freshman teams for soccer and baseball is off. Back to campus. We want to enhance our town and youth and community athletic experience. We want to relieve pressure on town parks and fields. We need to address the NIAS, which is the New England Association of School and Colleges, Critical School Facility Needs, which we have been cited as lacking for our facilities, athletic and our buildings. And we want to build community pride and attraction for our families in town. As you can see, if we go to the project plan, it shows a new turf stadium, a new track and field and events amenities. We have a synthetic softball field because we need to be compliant with Title IX. We have four tennis courts, which are near project adventure, but will not impact that at all. And we also have a multi-purpose synthetic turf, turf, baseball field and grass fields behind for lacrosse and practice fields. The Hamilton One Athletic Facility Improvement Committee has been working with the district for the last 16 months. Our main purpose is to help the district offset the cost of this project. We are committed to raising and also to seek state and local grants to help source this project. If you go onto the next page, it gives you a breakdown of the cost. Right now, the schematic design is around 75, 75% completed. There's still some work that needs to be done. But we're working with Gale Associates, who we've worked with for the past 10 years to give us a projection on the costs. We have added cost escalation into the formulation, given where we stand now with inflation and all the supply chain demand issues.
I think you need to advance one slide.
Great, thank you. So what we, if you want to go line by line, we combined the study from 2017 and add the new configuration. The turfing of the softball field, and this also includes lights also. If we compare our school to the other KPN League schools, which will be on the next slide, you can see that Hamilton One currently right now, aside from Amesbury and Rockport, are the only schools in the KPN League without, KPN League without turf fields. The slide shows you that Hamilton One is the only school without lights. And we are the, aside from Newbury Port, the only school without tennis courts. If anyone has been paying attention to the news lately, infill of what you use for the fields has become a hot topic, especially with Mayor Wu putting a moratorium on synthetic fields. We just had a meeting with Gale this evening and Gale is going to provide us with studies that really put people's fears at bay. There's no correlation between chrome, chrome rubber, which was used, which is used as a infill and cancer. There's been some studies done that show the impact of concussions. So they're gonna provide us with all those up to date studies. So we are aware of, of the controversy around infill and we are prepared to address those issues. The next slide. The working groups' suggested approach. The Hamilton One Regional School Committee moved on June 16th to continue the full project feasibility efforts. They are fully behind our effort, which is great, which I know in years past, that hasn't been the case with the school administration. I think you saw on Saturday with the creation of the stabilization fund in both towns, the support of the district as well as the community for this project. The school committee target of 8.5 budget, not to exceed 12 to 13 million for the final estimate. We, as a group, have targeted a private fundraising group of two to two and a half million dollars. We're going to be looking to state and local grants for one and a half to two million. The administration, as you saw again on Saturday, is working to confirm funding capacity and options. And our plan, or the district's plan, is to bring forth a full project to the community at the April 23 spring meeting. Our next step, working with the school district, the school committee will formalize, this is the next slide, please, the formalized school committee's support to finance, structure and approach. We have created a fundraising branch of the HW Afic and we have begun our private fundraising. We are beginning our state and local grant applications. And as you saw again on Saturday at the, at the town meeting, we will be, we will be keeping everyone abreast of what's happening, what's going on. As I said earlier, we do have 75% complete drawings and there's still some more work to be done. And we will continue to refine budget estimates and the timelines. So again, if we look at our timeline, we're still working, rather, it is the district's project, but we are, as community members, working with them. So the design development and level engineering will continue. Permitting has been extended in the town of Hamilton because we had permits back from 2017 and the five-year permitting was up at the end of the month and the town of Hamilton has renewed our permitting. We did present to Hamilton in August and we thank you for allowing us to present to you now. We will seek approval for the project or the district will in the April town meetings. And our very aggressive goal would be to be construction in the spring of 2024. And the project would be completed over a six-month period, which would be completed in the fall of 2024. The goal would be to have our students at the high school only lose one season of sports. If for the next slide, I don't know if it's, I don't think, I think we took it off of there. You know, the fiscal considerations will have to be determined between the district and the FinCons in both towns. And that's where our committee would step away because it definitely is something, a school project that they need to work with both towns on. And that is my quick presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have at this time.
Thank you, Michelle. Peter, questions?
Welcome, Gary.
Yeah, I have some questions. So we, we were sent by Diana Lang an article about Odell Beckham going crazy because one of his giant, New York Giant friends has a concussion issue. And then we were also sent, I believe you guys were sent this, right? Why can't I get this to show up? It's a Boston Globe article from September 15th and it's all about safety risk as artificial turf fields wear out. It's all about Charlestown High School.
Yeah.
And I guess, I, you know, I think as you move to our spring town meeting, I think there are a lot of questions in here that need to be answered. So, so we know how much maintenance is really required.
Yeah, we just, like, as I said, we were in a meeting with Gale this afternoon, early evening. And a lot of the issues, especially in Charlestown, are because they did not maintain their fields. A yearly maintenance is needed every year as well. These need to go hand in hand to secure the safety and ensure the safety of the students. So the district is aware of the measures that need to be taken as well as our group. And we are enlisting Gale to provide us with studies and full maintenance of what needs to be done. We can't let what happened to our natural fields over the last eight years. It was a deferred maintenance, as you know, Diane and Peter. Our children played on fields that were subpar. And a lot of them had to do with deferred maintenance because of money issues. We can't let that go forward, that that can't happen any longer, whether it be the same maintenance has to, has to be, be insured for the protection of our students. And so we're well aware of that. But thank you, and we will, we will address it before a town meeting.
So one of the things.
Will someone in the background please mute?
So I think one of the things that, so I had a football player and a baseball player. And I know how soggy Patton Park is when it rains in third base, right field or left field. And I don't really want to get on the bad side of Reggie Mademan, but so what I was told is that
and do you want the?
Patton Park will still be the preferred baseball park to play in.
That is correct for varsity, it will be.
Right. So, so, and I get that, that the tennis court issue is ridiculous.
Yes.
I mean, that's just insane what, what's being paid for tennis. And we need a new track. Do we really need to make the softball field turf?
We do because of Title IX. So the field behind, if you can look at the, I can't bring it up, but if you can look at the slide.
I know what it looks like, yeah.
Yep, so that is also a multi-purpose, baseball multi-purpose. And because it's being denoted as baseball, because that is turf, softball has to be turfed. If, and I have to go back to the group, but if, let's say, we call it just straight out multi-purpose, then maybe potentially we won't have to be compliant with Title IX and do the softball. But right now, to be compliant, it has to be.
So I guess the only thing I would say is, let's fully understand what the maintenance is on these so that we don't have football players getting concussions. And that we also know. And that we also know when, when it's all going to have to be replaced in like thirteen or whatever years.
Well, you know, what's interesting is that we talked about the different infills today, and most people don't use a shock pad with chrome rubber, chrome, excuse me, chrome rubber. But the group tonight said first, definitely, we would in, in, would put the extra money into putting a shock pad if we went with chrome rubber. The other Enviro fills, they're saying you don't need it, but we, as a group, said that we would definitely invest the extra money to protect our students and put a, a shock pad underneath the, the fields, whatever material we used. So that was key. And then we will definitely look, and the maintenance, a lot of people are saying it's eight years. The warranty is eight years, but Gale is saying that if you maintain your fields correctly, that you can get twelve to fourteen years out of the field if they're maintained correctly. If they're not, then it's eight years, and that's what the warranty is. But if you maintain it correctly, twelve to fourteen years is the lifespan of it. And what happened in Charlestown, they weren't, they weren't maintaining it, and that's part of the reason why the issue is there now.
And I can't believe I'm giving you what seems like a hard time here, but-
No, it's fine, please ask the questions, wait.
If it's, if they say eight years, and you do maintenance so that it actually lasts longer, and something goes wrong with some kid, are, is there a liability issue there?
I can't answer that question.
Well, think about it.
Yeah, I can write, I can bring that up to him. I think if we did the, as what Gale told us tonight, is that you are, there's testing that has to be done every year to make sure that your fields are still adequately protecting your athletes. And again, if, I would think that if, and again, I can bring this back to Gale, if you have documentation that you're doing testing, you know, I would, one would think that that would be adequate enough. Again, the same thing if a student gets hurt on a natural turf. You know, it's, it's tough, but I will ask that question.
All right, sounds like you're all over it.
We're trying, thank you. You know, as, as you saw on Saturday, there's a huge community swell for this project. And just, as we all know, we love this town. I would love to have everyone get together on a Friday night for a football game, have a soccer, girls' soccer game on a Friday night, and have my elderly neighbor come. My husband's always looking for something to do now, now that our kids are out of the district. You know, it's just, it should be a draw for everybody. And it shouldn't be that once your children leave the district, there's nothing for you to do in town anymore. I, we really see this as a, a community builder and something that's needed, so.
I agree.
Yeah, we're trying. Any other questions? I know I didn't present as well as Peter Gordo, but, but I do thank you, thank you for giving us the opportunity.
So just one question. What's the final design, or, you know, final enough to bring it to the town so that people can have a real look at it before any town meeting?
You know, I'm going to have to check in with Superintendent Tracy and see where he is with that. More money is needed, as always. But the stabilization fund does allow us to do more, to do more refined work on it, to get it to a hundred percent drawing. But I can ask that question of him and get back to you. But the plan is to have it before town meeting, so people have it available to them.
Any questions, Diane?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
All right.
So if I could, just recap, so I will get you a date on when you can have more refined drawings for the town and impact on turf and the controversy that's, that's swirling now around synthetic materials, as well as what a maintenance plan would look like.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, have a good night.
All right, Steve, so that A, B, C done. Where are we back into the agenda order? All right. So amongst the three of us, any comments from special town meeting results? Diane?
So I think we could do a brief recap of what passed and what changed and what passed.
Very well, so, Steve, I'll attempt that and correct me as we go astray here. So Article One, which was the reauthorization of the previously authorized two hundred fifty thousand, passed really without much comment. That sound right, Diane?
Yes.
Article Two, which set up the authorization for the school district to borrow the million dollars for the feasibility study for the new Cutler School, passed but was separated into two portions. And Steve, you had talked with Lauren, so the ballot vote is still on, is that correct? You're muted.
Yeah, my understanding so far is, you know, and Lauren and Robin are going to reduce this to writing, but my understanding is that the contingency is dropped. So the, the, you know, the passage of the amendment essentially dropped the contingency of a Proposition Two and a Half override, but allowed the, the school district to proceed with the borrowing and feasibility study with, with or without the passage of the ballot question coming up.
However, the ballot question is still important in that if it does not pass, then the town of Wyndham does not have the option of doing a debt exclusion for that money.
That's right.
If it does pass, it's just, it doesn't say that we are having a debt exclusion. It says that it's on the table for us to use if we want to at some point during the budget season to, to use a, it makes it an option. It doesn't say we're definitely doing it, but if it does not pass, then we, we can't, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, my understanding, so they have, they have the authority now to borrow and proceed with the feasibility study. Those borrowing costs will be reflected in our assessment. And if the ballot question, again, in my understanding, is, does not pass, then those increased in our assessments due to the debt service on the Wyndham's portion of the one million dollar borrowing will have to be picked up through the tax levy, the existing tax levy, without an exclusion. And I also, based on my understanding with Lauren's comment at the meeting, that if it fails, we can still try to, we can still try for another debt exclusion. Again, we're essentially going through this process again, town meeting vote, then a ballot question. So you can still try again, but it doesn't, you know, doesn't, doesn't mean that the outcome is going to be any different.
But, so, it, it means if the ballot, if it does not pass in November, we don't have the option to use a debt exclusion at this moment, but we don't necessarily need to put it on the tax rate if we choose to use ARPA funds for that. We are responsible for that money, but we don't have that funding source yet. That using a debt exclusion would not be an option at that point.
Well, it would be if we go forward again at the April town meeting for a debt exclusion after the FinCon gets through the whole budget process.
I, I understand all that, right? It's just like, they, they didn't vote for it, so at one point you just have to stop asking.
All right, so that was Article Two, Stabilization Fund. I came up with some questions, and I understand it was much more question at the Hamilton Town Meeting, but the Stabilization Fund passed, which gives the, the school district the ability to establish a Stabilization Fund, which would be sourced by several different possibilities, but would be only spendable by a two-thirds vote of the school committee, but that vote does not entail any review by the towns. So that's number three. And number four, the correction of the bylaw to make it more clarified, ended up with amendment, an amendment to the amendment. And the bottom line on that was the amendment to the amendment, which was replacing it in full, was the final passage, but that all now has to go to the Attorney General's Office to see if it actually is effective. So we wait for the AG's reply on that. And we heard quite a bit of detail from both Representative Jamie Belcito and Senator Bruce Starr on what we're expecting on the wrap-up from the current legislative session. And I think that was the four articles. Anything else I missed there, Diane?
No, I think you did good.
Right, right. And we'll have the, the official transcript, not transcript, but the official minutes from that prepared soon from the town clerk's office. So Peter, feel like you were there now?
I absolutely do.
All right, good. All right, so anything else from the special town meeting? Everybody, please check your mute button. All right, item E.
Maybe there's no E?
Coming up, it's coming up.
Can you see that?
It's a good one.
No, it's still stuck on D.
Sorry, I got so many PowerPoints open.
Right.
Other matters.
The other matters. Any other matters, Peter?
None for me.
Diane?
I don't, I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up. We didn't, we didn't do anything in particular for Indigenous Peoples' Day. We did it last year. I'm not sure if it's something we need to do every day, or we just say-
We've been, haven't heard anything from the Human Rights Committee, who has the kind of the task to work on that.
Well, that's, that's who brought it to my attention, because I, I forgot about it. And I didn't, you know, it's next week, so we're already behind, but I don't know if it's something we should post on the website.
Well, yes, so why don't we post recognition for that? But I don't think we're in line to do an event with this late entry.
But maybe we can put that on our calendar for next year, to make sure we're on top of all these different things.
Okay, schedule then. Next Select Board meeting will be the eighteenth of October planned, back to a Tuesday night. And the following one after that is, will be into November. Also, we have the full budget cycle schedule, right, Steve? Is that, we finalized that?
Yep, that's finalized.
All right, so the three of us received-
Did you send that out again? Just so I can, thank you, I think I have it.
And I think no other particular events for us coming up as far as outside activities like fairs and so forth, other than Thursday, the public forum, right?
Where's that going to be?
I think it's going to be at the Wyndham Museum, that sound right?
Yep.
We're going to sound like Coach Belichick day by day, right?
Do your job.
Yes, all right. So Steve, anything else?
No, I don't have anything for you.
All right, Peter? So let's have the motion.
When is the ATA coming?
Ah, yes, so our new Assistant Town Administrator starts a week from tomorrow on the eleventh. And we'll be, we'll introduce him at our eighteen October Select Board meeting. It's already set up.
Great, thank you.
And I think, Steve, you were talking about scheduling meetings with the three of us, one-on-one, with the new ATA, just for hellos.
Yeah, right, we'll do all the introductions this first, this Tuesday. You know, there's a few people that are anxious to get him on board, so. Yeah, but once, once he gets in and settled after a couple of days, we'll, we'll get some introductions going, set up some meetings.
All right, sounds good.
Hey, Gary, I have a question for you. So you sent me the, the two reports on those trust funds?
Yes.
I mean, I read them, and, and, you know, there's, there's the five-point-eight-million-dollar fund. And I'm not sure why you wanted me to see that, but the one thing I would say is, I don't think we're getting a very good return there.
No, certainly over the last few years, we haven't. So I would propose that as we get into the budget season and probably in November, we can take a preliminary look at our current investment policies and how they're being applied. So that, you know, without getting into another whole discussion here, so I'll book that in probably for the first Select Board meeting in November to have the investment review.
Okay, great.
All right.
All right, so with nothing left to further discuss, I move that we adjourn the October third, two thousand twenty-two Select Board meeting at eight thirty-nine.
I second that.
All in favor, Peter?
Yes.
Steve? Sorry, sorry. The picture's shifted on me there. All right, very well. And thank you, everybody, tonight, you know, there's a lot of effort went into doing the presentation, so we appreciate that for getting the extra information to us, and we'll be reaching some decisions hopefully soon. Thank you.